Y'all ready? Everybody's ready?
Oh, I didn't realize. I'm just talking away.
Yeah, me too. I know. Me too. I was enjoying myself.
I apologize.
I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have the prayer and the pledge by Councilwoman Deidra Ledbetter.
We pray, dear God, for our churches and schools, our workplaces, our communities, and our people. Your help is needed to be a light wherever you have given us to go. We need your wisdom and compassion as we work to live together. Your love will help us to see the needs of others before our own and to be able to serve all those around us through your power. For those times when we feel helpless and hopeless, Lord, grant us your joy, your grace, the power of your peace, and your strength in these dark and difficult times. We ask for wisdom and discernment from all leaders of our nation. Wake us up, Lord. Remind us to be aware and to redeem our time, to listen to you and to be open to making a difference in this country. Give us the courage to speak up. We need to speak up and not remain silent. We ask that you surround each leader with wise counsel for doing what is right for all people. We pray that you bestow upon us unwavering faith in you to be strong, firm, and determined in all that we do. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Throw call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gosselin.
Present.
Councilmember Brooke Marcot. Councilmember Marlin Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember David Broussard.
Here.
Councilmember Deidra Ledbetter.
Here.
Councilmember DeeDee Johnson-Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Dustin Swier.
Here.
Item one, public comment. We have any comment cards?
Yes, sir.
Great. I want to remind everybody this time, please put your phones on silent. There's no back and forth. It's a three-minute comment time, and we just listen. Thank you.
Richard Phillips to address Agenda Item Number Three.
Agenda Item Three is the budget for next year. First, I want to say hello to everybody. I am not familiar with the total. I think there was a summary in the newspaper, but for people in order to know what I should be talking about in the next couple of items where the public comments are, I think it behooves us to communicate better. It could be on the web, for instance, where somebody could just go to a website and read the whole thing. They wouldn't use up a lot of newsprint that way. Just a suggestion. But as somebody who is somewhat uninformed as to what I would be making a public comment about on item number three, I'm just making that as what I would call a constructive criticism. Thank you for your time.
Randy Gosselin to discuss Agenda Item Number 21-111. What should be...
Resolution E.
Agenda Item Number Five-E.
Yeah, drainage. Five, yeah, E. That's correct. Again, thank you for giving me the opportunity to address the council. I have a business located at 902 Jefferson Terrace, which is in that area where we have significant drainage problems along with Dale Street, Weldon, and a few others, but it wasn't addressed, at least it didn't make reference to Jefferson Terrace. And that's a big bottleneck from water coming down all the way from about where the climate control building is, heading south. Years ago, when I was young, I used to hunt down a blacktop road, not even blacktop, blackjack road with trees on each side, and it had a canal on one side. And I think what happened over the past 50 years, the canal did get covered up, culverts put in, covered up, and didn't plan for too much cement to be poured where Walmart is and everybody else, so we have no absorption of the rain. And we have a tremendous amount of water. In fact, I think the mayor's received quite a few pictures from me along with the parish president whenever it floods, and everybody knows that it's a bottleneck right there. Admirald is a levee. When you shoot the elevations on the LSU site and you ping it, you see my buildings about, my slab of my building's about one inch above Admirald. And for one of the big heavy rains, it was one inch to get into my building. When the cars would pass, it would lap across the sidewalk, which is the same elevation as my floor. So I don't know if one of the solutions would be a pumping station further down, because you wouldn't want to put a pumping station right at Admirald because Jefferson Terrace floods all the way down. But the city limits school is halfway down Jefferson Terrace, so there's a problem as to what jurisdiction do we get involved with? Like the Armco Canal in the West End, they have a big pumping system over there. It's going to have to happen because where most of the growth is, is southwest Louisiana, southwest New Iberia, and that's where Jefferson Terrace is. I know the mayor and the Public Works Department and the parish, they've cleaned up the canals, and we've had a couple of rains since then. We still flooded, not as much, but we still had enough water that would stop people from coming to our businesses. Even going around the Cato's, but with Feldman's Jewelers and also where GameStop is, all that gets flooded whenever we have a significant rain. And so I would just hope that Jefferson Terrace, or just next to Iberia, New Iberia Senior High, gets put into the proposal, or at least the engineering work that they're going to hopefully provide for us that gives us some answers to that. And when I mentioned earlier about the pipes that were put into that Jefferson Terrace, which was just a little bitty blackjack road at that time, I don't think the culverts under the Admiral Doyle were sized properly, not thinking what would happen in 2015, 2020, 2021. And then maybe the state has to get involved because that's a state highway. Pull all that up and put in big box drains like what you have next to the Inn of Iberia. I think it's called the Southern Inn or something right now, but box drains I think will have to go into there so we can get more water out of there. But anyway, thanks for the time just to address some of my concerns and some of the history on that area. But we're going to continue to have floods over there as long as we get big rains. Thank you all very much.
Eric Ormentor for Agenda Item Number Five-E.
Thank you, council, for having me tonight. I hadn't been here in quite a while, and I'm glad to be back. Just briefly, Dale Street, Weldon area, my business, Ormentor Jewellery's on that corner, floods, you know, quite bad in front of the store in the street. Fortunately, my building is a little bit higher than Mr. Hykes' and my neighbors on the side, they have had water in their buildings. I have not, so I've been blessed in that way. Just here to encourage the council to do whatever you can to help that area. I know the Lewis Street, Galatas and Tahata's, they've had water in their buildings. Randy just spoke about Jefferson Terrace, it's always bad. So that whole area seems to be an issue. Do what you can. Ted Hyke and I talked about it briefly, and he's, you know, coming to address. I said, "Well, I'll come too." Just as a personal note, I think Dale Street should be considered as our third major thoroughfare going east-west in Iberia. So, you know, I'd like to see some other improvements as well, but if you certainly, if we can't fix the drainage issue, we're going to have, you know, problems to try to use that as a major street. So just here to encourage you to do what you can for engineering and work out down the road and be glad to see some improvements. The whole town will benefit for sure. Thank you.
Ted Hyke for Agenda Item Number Five-C, Five-D, and Five-E.
Thank you very much, mayor and council members. This place is very familiar to me, as you may know, but I'm glad to be here. First, I want to thank you all, thank the administration, because there has been some improvements in that Weldon Street and Dale Street and Jefferson Terrace Street area due to your involvement. Couple of new drainage culverts have been put in. There's been the cleanout of that People's Canal in the corporate limits. Thank the good Lord. And also thank the parish president because he picked up the extension of that cleaning out of that People's Canal all the way to Bayou Jack. There was, I think it's the Sydney J Bridge there, right off of Weeks Island Road, that there was just a, it was a huge levee, if you will, that was stopping all the water up. So if we keep that People's Canal area clean, or as clean as possible, then we won't have to, the businesses in the Weldon Street and Dale Street and Jefferson Terrace Street will be able to absorb more of the water, and that's due to your conscious involvement in that process. So I want to thank you for that. I encourage you to keep working on this drainage. I was so excited to see that there's going to be some contractual letting for this particular drainage problem because it's very serious. We fight it all the time. It depreciates the property values in that area. It stops the development in that area, and that's concerning to all of us, particularly those of us that own property or live in that area, and there's a lot of businesses and residents in that area. But while I have your attention, I want to thank you for something else, too, and it has to do with the city of New Iberia. And I'm one that walks the park, the city park, a lot, and my goodness, I see a lot of improvement in that city park. Thank you very much for your service in that area. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, Item Two.
Acceptance of the minutes of September 21st, 2021, as published on October 3rd, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gosselin and a second by Councilman Marlin Lewis. Is there any discussion on our minutes from September the 21st? Seeing, hearing none? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, Item Three-A.
Public hearing on ordinance number 2021-2022-01, Budget Adoption Ordinance, An Ordinance Adopting a Budget for the City of New Iberia for the Fiscal Year Ending October 31st, 2022.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard and a second, I think it was. Councilman Swier this time? Thank you. Is there any public comment on our, on this item? No public comment? Thank you. Then I need a motion to close our public hearing. Motion by Mayor Protim Ricky Gosselin and a, there you go. Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. Thank you. Madam Clerk, four A.
Ordinance number 2021-2022-01, Budget Adoption Ordinance, An Ordinance Adopting a Budget for the City of New Iberia for the Fiscal Year Ending October 31st, 2022.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard. Do I have a second?
Check it.
Councilman Lewis. Is there any discussion on this item?
I have one comment.
Yes, ma'am.
So in the future, we're going to be tracking the Peplex.
As a separate item.
Sorry. No, I'm saying the expenses as a separate.
Oh, yes, ma'am. That would be its own little division with a department head.
Exactly. Yes. Is there any reason why we couldn't do the same thing with Weston and City Parks since they both have recreation centers? So that we can see the expenses for each, and then even the revenue that's coming in for each one of the parks?
I guess we could do something, I mean, it has a department head and it's all under one department. That doesn't mean we couldn't break out some expenses or Kevin couldn't give us a report that could, we could change the way he does the report. It's not going to be its own item because it's not, you know, it already has a department head, the same person runs it, but there's no reason that we can't modify how Kevin
Right.
Piles the information so that you could kind of see what's going on in each park.
Yes.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, cool.
For spending money in all of them, and that's good.
But I think it helps to show people kind of where we're spending money and, you know, for each park.
Sure. And I mean, we probably could do the same thing for Bank Park. We probably could do the same thing, you know, because we are spending money globally, and as you know, we're trying to create some new parks. We have a couple of Capital Otley things, so maybe, you know, we might be able to divide it into each park because they all aren't used equally in some ways. You know, a pocket park is different from a, the new little park on Anne Street, the part that we're hoping to do, the bus stop park that we're proposing on Henry, you know, those are a different use.
Right.
So the expenses won't be equal per each park, but it would be fun to look at it.
Right. And then we could also see, okay, I mean, are some of the programs that we have in place at these parks generating enough revenue to even cover some of the expenses? I don't know. Just be able to analyze the information.
Probably a no, but I would like to, I'd like to know that because we are talking about new programs, we're talking about doing things differently. So what it will show is this is supported and maybe this isn't.
Exactly.
I think we can put our heads together and think of something else.
Yeah, it helps us analyze the data. It'll tell a story of.
Data tells a story.
Yep.
Cool. Yes, sir.
I think, DeeDee, I think it's really a proactive and a good idea because now that we've asked for the community's support on the ADD tax, which is going to be dedicated to the recreational department in the Pepplex, and we're always up here preaching about accountability. So I think it's just beliberous of us to go ahead and be accountable and show them that, you know, where the money's being spent and how we're using it to benefit the community. I think it's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's going to help us show off what we're really doing.
Yes.
If you want to know the truth, because every time I meet with a new group, they can't believe, "Well, I didn't know you were doing this. I didn't know this is happening." Facebook loves the negative, so you end up with, you know, forgetting about the positives. So I like that. Anybody else?
I was under suspicion you were the reason why Facebook went down the other day.
Only if I had my way, but if I could do that, I wouldn't be the mayor. Yes, sir.
I just want to make a comment. It's kind of based on the comment I made last meeting about this budget. I think as a council, we've done a great job together, and that's why we were able to really narrow it down in one night and get it done. So I just want to thank the council for everything in getting this down to the T. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other further comments on our budget? Hearing none? I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you all very much. Madam Clerk, five A.
Resolution 21-107, A Resolution in Support of Original Agreement with Louisiana Department of Transportation and Development, DOTD, State Project Number H14510, FAP Number H014510, Iberia Street Pavement Preservation and Bike Lane Improvement for Iberia Parish.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Broussard.
Second.
Second, Councilman Swier. Do we have any discussion on this item?
So do we need to get right-ofways for this project?
No, it's a resurface, and all they're doing is staying within the present street, and this is one that was brought to us. They basically said, "This is the street we want to redo." I tried to move it to Bank Street, but they said it's going to be Iberia Street. So that's what we get. So it's a million-dollar project. I'm not going to look and give hearts in the mouth, but no, it will be fine within the right-ofways that we have.
Okay, so do we need to relocate any utilities or anything?
I don't think so. It's just a resurface. I think we're going to be fine on this one.
Okay, cool.
I do think that it would behoove us to put a notice out like we're going to do on the road program.
Right.
Just to make sure that we don't have any utilities we need to go, or some subcontract or something that's going to go tear it up before, the week after we fix it. So I am going to start doing that, that we send out some press releases of this road is coming and at least try to prevent, it's still going to happen, but at least try to prevent some of that if we can. But I'll do that after we kind of support this.
Okay.
And I'm waiting on a schedule out of them as well. It's not going to happen quickly.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's about three quarters in my district. Been telling the citizens that it's coming, and it finally has arrived. So citizens of District Three and the whole city, please take notice that our roads are going to be changed in the next year or two. Not only this one, Bank Street and a few others, but I'm proud to see the state coming down in my district handling three quarters of at least on Iberia Street is a lot of my district. So I just wanted to tell the people it's coming. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Broussard answered some of my questions in his comments. So, and I remember us working this, working on this on the last term. This is basically, the state came in because they wanted to create those bike lanes. Help us out with those bike lanes?
No, they came in to resurface a road, and they have to give us something because we belong to NPO and we pay a fee, and most of the work goes to Lafayette. I'm not being ugly. So they decide to give us a project every once in a while, and they basically brought this and said, "This is your project." We asked for bike lanes.
Right.
Anytime I can do anything to connect our city, we have a couple of other ones that are pending, and if they go through, I've asked for bike lanes there, too. So I push for a bike lane anywhere I can get it.
Right.
But this is one that, like I said, we got to get something out of our membership.
Right, got you.
And so would, who owns the maintenance of this bike lane project in the future?
We do. I mean, you know, they're going to come and do it, and then after that, it's our street, so.
So we'll have to maintain it.
We will, along with the 12.5 we're about to do with our road bond, you know, in other words, and I have some ideas that I'll be presenting later on maintenance, and because I'm determined to get us a road program. We can't go 10, 12 years for doing nothing, 15 years to get our finances straight and do it again. I do think I have a path forward, but that'll be for a little later. Let's get, let's get our bond started, but we'll have the maintenance of that.
Okay.
Anybody else?
So basically, this is a road that's getting paid that we didn't have to pay for.
Oh, that's right. That's exactly right. Just like we have some state roads that are eligible, so our consultant, you know, John didn't pick those roads. We stayed away from the state roads that run through town because we're going to try to get state funding for those to make our dollars that we've borrowed go as far as we can. Anybody else? No? Then I ask you to please vote your machines. Thank you again. Madam Clerk, five B.
Resolution 21-108, Appointing Philau Martin to the Port of Iberia District Board of Commissioners to Represent the City of New Iberia for a Term of Six Years.
Do I have a motion?
Move.
We have a motion. Councilman Swier and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed.
No, Deidra Ledbetter.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, man. Well, you know, trying. Sorry, Deidra.
I talk too much.
No, you don't. And as our new policy states, Mr. Martin, stand up and tell us hi. Good. As our new policy states, we try to get the person here, because we used to not do that, who we were appointing, so that you see a face, you know. I interviewed him, we had a nice discussion. I think he fits well with the port and kind of what they want to do. He can come up if you have any questions. If you don't, you know, you didn't have to. But he's here. So any comments? Any questions? No? Then I would please ask you to vote your machines. Thank you for that. Mr. Martin, thank you for volunteering, and it's wonderful to see a young person who wants to get involved. You told me your father worked at the port, you kind of got a, you know, a history out there, and just keep us posted on what's happening. And again, thank you for being involved. Good.
He got an awesome resume, too.
He does have a good resume. He, that he does. Thank you. Maybe we give him to do something else, one step at a time.
Stand up again so we can remember you. There you are.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, five C.
Resolution 21-109, Approving Contract for Professional Services Between the City of New Iberia and Domain Zabo and Associates for Engineering Services in Conjunction with Sewer Improvements, FPNC, Project Number 50-ML1-20-01.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Mayor Protim Ricky Gosselin and a second by Councilman Swier, and I see that we have Kristen Susan here. Can't thank you all enough for attending and all the work you've put in to get us this far and the consent decree and all those grant applications. We've got a lot going on, which is, which is a good thing. So any discussion? Yes, sir.
Just, you know, a lot of things happen with these sewer countries, you know? People don't see below ground what's happening, but it's so important to the city to have a functional sewer system and improvements that we talked about with Vince are going to go a long way in the growth of this community, and thank you guys for doing what you're doing. You don't get enough credit for what you do.
Anybody else? And I have one question. Our $5 million that we're applying for, we think sometime first quarter next year we should have an answer? Oh, we don't know. They won't come in. No, what else is new? But I was just curious, because remember, we have to come up with a million-dollar match to get 5 million.
Right.
Which is well worth doing. And for our match, phase one way to do our match would be, it's really 1.5 million, but we'll get four or five out of Vince, and then we might actually take part of the 5.2 million that we have now and use that as a match if you see fit, if it comes quick enough.
Okay.
That would be a quick way to take 1 million out of that and turn it into 5.
Right.
Because we have more money coming. But anyway, we have time to see about that. Yes, sir, Vince?
The, I think the Act requires the state to get the applications into the state by, or into the legislature by November 8th, right? Now whether they act on it that month or not, I'm not even sure if they're in session during that month, but they have, everything has to be in by the 8th of November. So I would assume that the legislature is going to act, pick those projects out of the applications that are submitted.
Good.
And get back with us pretty quick.
Good.
So that's all we can tell you. It has to be.
And we're ready for November 8th? Oh, we will be? Okay, thank you all.
Working hard on it, yeah.
I know you all are. Thank you. Great, no other discussion? Please vote your machines. Thank you. Madam Clerk, five D.
Resolution 21-110, Approving Contract for Professional Services Between the City of New Iberia and Staples Engineering for a Drainage Improvement Project Near the Intersection of Glenn Street, Evangeline Street, and Caroline Street.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman.
Second.
Deidra Ledbetter, and a second by Councilwoman DeeDee Reed. Do we have any discussion on this item?
So I just had a quick question. This is the same area that the railroad is coming in and potentially going to close that railroad crossing. Is that going to affect this project at all? Because.
No.
Glenn Street, that's all the same area.
Our water goes out the other way. Now, I can tell you that, you know, we need to widen, Glenn is the connector.
Right.
That is too small.
Yes.
That if in wind, without our permission and with us having nothing to want to do with it, they close the railroad crossing, we are going to have to widen Glenn Street. So there could be some drainage issues there, and I've already talked to Chandler that if in wind, the railroad comes and acts like, you know, the thousand-pound bear, we will have to add that to this. But with these projects are our money that we have now in our drainage fund. We are going to apply for $5 million in drainage money, and that will be in January, February. Again, we're not sure when they're going to act on it, and we have the match for that waiting. But in, I didn't want to wait. In addition, you know, we're, it's time to hire engineers for new projects. We're about to bid out the next part of Jefferson Terrace, which goes a little further. I run out of pipe because I run out of fall. Water's got to go only in one direction, you know? So we'll extend Jefferson Terrace. The money's there to do that as far as we can. It won't go as far as you're going to want, but at least it'll get further down the road to take care of some water. And then these projects, all of these projects are just the beginning because we have other projects planned. We'd like to wait to see if I take, we take 1 million and turn it into 5. We'd like to wait to see if I take, we take 1 million and turn it into 5. If we take 1 million and turn it into 5, well, then I didn't want to burn up our money that we get for drainage every year, which is the leftover from the mosquito tax that we get to do drainage and abatement with that money. So I didn't want to burn that all up if I knew I was gonna get the 5 million. If I don't get the 5 million, out of the 5.1, we would probably take a million of that because drainage is something that through the ARP, we can do. So I'm waiting to play my cards of, am I using the million for a match? Or am I using the million for more drainage projects? Either way, more drainage is coming. So this is just the beginning of a bigger picture that we have been studying that area. And look, we are subject to, we're flat, and we're subject to tides, and we're subject to the outfalls. Every bit of the city drains out into the parish. So Larry and I work together. We communicate well, trying to get that water out of town. Some of the solutions, we're making it a little better. We're gonna get to a point where we flatline and there's not much else we can do. And the water's gotta get out of the, get out of town and get out to the bay and get down those canals. So it is a bigger picture, but I want to make sure that we are doing everything that we can do to move the water out of town as fast as we can. Um, so anyway, but this is just the start of, of a bigger picture because we do know that your area, as well as many other areas in town, have some real drainage issues. So, anyway. Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have a comment.
Sure.
Of course, this is my district.
Yes, ma'am.
Jefferson Terrace also. Uh, the next one is in my district, too, Weldon Street and East Dale. And I'm very happy that, um, we're doing these projects. And the Jefferson Terrace, the extension of that, will start in the very near future.
Yes, ma'am.
Because in that area, it floods a lot. If it gets a, a hard rain, I mean, it's gonna flood. And I really feel for the residents in the area, as well as the businesses. Uh, they suffer every time it rains really hard. So hopefully, I'm praying, that this does help out. You know, it, it a little bit helps. And hopefully, this will really help out in the area.
It's an inch game. In other words, when the cars are lapping over from their wake and causing a building to flood, I've got the cops responding quicker. I've got two high-water vehicles. Now I bought the cops barricades because they'll beat Public Works sometimes because Public Works has to come from out of town or from wherever to go get the barricades. Now I keep them here. So I have 25 barricades. In the new budget, I think I'm buying 25 more. So that'll give me 50 barricades. When we order new trucks, we're getting one four-wheel-drive truck per each shift. So each lieutenant will drive a four-wheel-drive truck. They can come, get, get over here quickly and hook onto that trailer and get out on these sites as quick as we can. This water that we're doing, that's what I keep telling Chandler, I'll spend the money for one inch. Because one inch could stop your building from flooding. Uh, it still doesn't get you down the road. I realize that Lewis Street and Jefferson Terrace, even if your building doesn't flood, your customers aren't coming because there's too much water. But my first priority is to stop these buildings from flooding. So we kind of prioritize the money to say, you know, what difference will it make? And if it'll make any difference that a building or a house doesn't flood, we think it's a worthwhile investment. But anyway. But sometimes it is a matter of fighting for an inch. Anybody else? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Madam Clerk, next item.
Resolution 21-111, approving contract for professional services between the City of New Iberia and Staples Engineering for a drainage improvements project near the intersection of Weldon Street and East Dale Street.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselin. Any discussion on this item? Yes, sir.
Would it be possible just to amend this one to maybe look at Dale and Jefferson Terrace, that drainage issue as well, while we're looking at that intersection down, just moving across to, uh, to try to look at maybe some potential relief on that little Jefferson area, Jefferson Terrace area?
I don't see why not. I mean, you know, if everybody's in agreement, I'll have to get with Chandler and, uh, you know, his budget might go up a little bit, but it's all about percentage basis. If everybody's okay with it, I mean, it's just extending it another couple of blocks.
That's it, it's just, while we're right in the area, closing the area.
He did kind of look at our drainage system and look at what we have available and try to tie it together. So he might, he could well come back and say, "I'll have to do that separately because the lines don't run," or "there's not enough capacity."
Well, let's make that request.
Yeah, let's make that request.
And see if we can amend that to include the Jefferson Terrace intersection with Dale.
Okay, well, then I need a motion to amend.
Motion to amend.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Councilwoman Deidre Reed, Councilman Swier. Uh, you would need to vote your machines on this amendment, to amend. Okay? I got a motion to amend that passes. Thank you very much. And then now we have to vote on the amended resolution.
Need a motion?
So, yeah, give me, give me a motion to add Jefferson Terrace.
I'll second again.
I got a motion by the Mayor Pro Tim and a second by Councilman Swier. And any discussion? We good on that? Then please pull the trigger. Thank you all. Good, good job. Madam Clerk, 6A.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 2020-2021-10, Amendment Number 9, and ordinance amending the budget to adjust within 5% and set for public hearing on October 19th, 2021.
Do I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Gosselin, second by Councilman Swier. Any discussion on this item? Hearing seen none? Please vote your machines. Thank you very much. 7A.
Kevin Zurang to present monthly budget reports for November 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2021.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening, Kevin.
Can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
I didn't know if it was on. So what we're going over is the budget actual through August. So as of August, we're 10 months into the budget. Would, would put us at 83%. General Fund budget is 23.8 million. We're at 18.5, which puts us at 77.9% of our revenue. And expenses of 22.9. Budgeted actuals 15, 17.5, which puts us at 76.3% of our expenses. Parks and Recreation, revenue, budget 1.6 million. Year-to-date, 1.5, which puts us at 93.11% of our revenue. Expenses, 1.3. Budget, actuals 923, putting us at 73.36.
Excuse me, Kevin. I'm sorry. Can we back up a second? I must have lost you. It's all the way down here, and I want to ask you a question.
Sure.
Can we go back up to planning and zoning? Am I looking at the wrong sheet?
It's an Excel spreadsheet that has general fund grouped together.
Yeah, he just did that whole section together.
Yeah, generally, that's what we do.
Okay, well, sorry. You know, first time on the council.
But if you have any questions in that section, you're welcome to ask them.
Yeah, okay. Uh, all right, so planning and zoning is at 93%?
Of the expenses, yes. And what we've done is we factored in those projects that are not going to get completed this year, and have adjusted the budget to reflect that.
So they're not gonna be completed, but you just, you're counting the expenditures so far?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And then those that we're saying we're not gonna complete this year, we're carrying over the balance to next year's budget.
Okay, so, okay.
Yeah, because there are quite a few of them that roll over that either aren't done, uh, either the state held this up or we were waiting on the core, or we were waiting on something, but, uh...
Okay. No, I just wanted to understand. We were recognizing expenses in this period, though.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I just wanted to understand.
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions? All right.
Back where you were.
Public Works, budgeted revenue 2.9 million. Actual expenses 2.6, leaving us at 87%, 87.56%. Revenue of 2.7. Budget, actuals of 1.9, putting us at 70.85% of our expenses. Sales Tax Fund, budgeted revenue of 9.1. Actuals 8.1, putting us at 88.73% of our revenue. Transfers out or dispersments, 11.4. Budget, actuals 9.5, putting us at 83.22% of our dispersments. Public Safety Fund, revenue of 3.4. Budget, actuals 3.1, putting us at 90.47 of our budget revenue. Expenses, budgeted 3.4. Actuals 2.8, putting us at 82.95% of our expenses, our dispersments out. Garbage Fund, revenue of 5.2 million. Budget, actual is 3.7, putting us at 71.62. The reason that is low, because when we did the, um, budget, we had, um, projected higher rebates. But then when Gardens redid, um, sold their business, there were some changes in some of the numbers.
Okay.
Just, you expect that trend to continue the rest of the fiscal year?
For the rest of this fiscal year, yes. Next fiscal year will be different.
Right, okay.
Okay.
And then at some point, when we renegotiate that contract, those rebates go away. We won't have a contract like that again. We'll just have a regular, straight-up contract for services and so much a house, and that's it. But the rebate game is not gonna get signed again.
Okay.
I wish it would, but, you know, no one's gonna do it.
Expenses of 5.2, actuals of 3.5, putting us at 68.15%. So my revenue's low, but so is my expenses. Section 8 vouchers, revenue of 3, 1.4. Actuals of 1.2, putting us at 89.23% of our revenue. Expenses of 1.5, budget, actuals of 1.2, putting us at 78.33. Waste water, revenue, budget 4.8. Actuals 4.6, putting us at 95.68%. Expenses of 5.2, budget, actuals 4.2, putting us at 80.5% on our expenses. Any questions?
Questions, comments? Well, thank you, Kevin.
Oh, you're welcome.
All right. Hmm, here we go. Now we got a bunch coming. Man. Got them all on the screen? Yeah? Give them a second to get ready.
In the future, um, since there are people sitting in the audience, is it possible for we to put the spreadsheet up there so they could see what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Kevin's up there talking.
Yeah, the more we use our technology, the better. That's good, that's good.
That way, people could see it.
That's fine with us.
Okay, cool.
That's why we bought it.
Yes.
And thank you all for helping me buy. Let me know when you're ready. It's frozen. So we're just talking about our technology. We cursed it.
Yeah. It was working fine a few minutes ago. Yeah, I don't even see a curse up there.
It's a good one.
Can you use your inner key? Will that work?
You're the IT person, so you might as well get up here and do that.
Hey, I am, but. I have not worked at IT in four years. I'm retired.
You gonna be sending me a bill?
I try, like, when, when stuff is happening, I'm like, I want to get up so bad. I'm like, oh, I gotta restrain myself.
We take all the help we can get. Anytime you want to come. We got problems, you can come. Are we ready?
We are ready.
All right, Jimmy.
Yes.
8A. Ready?
Nope, it just turned on subtitles. Just don't cuss, eh?
So she don't cuss is fine.
Sure.
While, while we're waiting.
We could talk about our, our new little system.
No, I got it.
I've, I've been working with Erin, and she's drafted, um, an approach, some options for demolitions, just to bring y'all, you know, back up to speed on all this, what we're doing. We determine who the owners are. We give them notice if they're out-of-state people or absentees, like deceased people, or if we don't know their whereabouts. We hired Joe Burke, and he gives them notice. So when these things come before the council, they're ready for action. There's one of them I'd like to defer action on, but I'll talk about it at that time. And just to try to limit our options here, I think it'd be helpful if we chose either, one, we demolish the building. Two, we allow so many days for the owner to demolish the building. And if he doesn't demolish the building, then we demolish the building without it coming back here. Or three, we revisit this and give the owner the chance to do the repairs to, um, to satisfy the inspection report and revisit it at a particular date, which I think is December 7th, in this case. That would be the next meeting. So if we could say, "Do it now. Do it if the owner doesn't do it," or revisit it December 2nd, I think, 7th, I think that would be a good way to proceed. And, uh, yeah, Erin's got a little draft here, and we're gonna say shall instead of should to make it mandatory. But, um, I think that's a great approach.
So remember, one is fast. One, we moving, we tearing it down. The sooner we get one done, the next we can do another one to clean up. When we know they're bad, you know, one's a go to me. Two is 30 days. If you don't do it, we do it. And the last one is the exception. But I think that's kind of a fun way to do it. It's a good summary. We'll get used to it. We'll just be able to say 1, 2, 3, and run with it, you know? Which is good because we have dedicated hundreds of thousands of dollars to clean this city up, but we need to do everything we can to keep our, keep the hammer on, you know? To keep our, our foot in the gas, or we will not tear down as many as we would like to and clean up as much property, you know?
I promise you, the people that live near these homes will be very excited when we say number one.
They will, they will. And there's exceptions. I understand that sometimes, you know, some people are gonna... It's a win if somebody does it themselves. We know that, but we just need to keep moving and kind of keep the pressure on. Yes, sir.
And you have a point because we all know our district better than anybody up here. So if you know and you talk to your constituents, that's a problem and needs to come down, then you go with number one and just get rid of it.
That's right.
And so basically, because we are the voice and for the, for that district.
Oh, sure.
You know, I agree. I don't believe in just sitting back and waiting more days and more days and more days. We, we allocated money to do it, let's do it and get it done.
Because they could have done it already.
One of the time, that's right. They could have done.
You're right. So I just wanted to make that clear.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Cool. You got a comment?
Yeah, I just think that, I think all three options are very progressive.
All three options solve the problem. And, and I think there's no, there's no way you're gonna get the problem solved one way or the other, so I think it's a great approach.
All right, are we ready to start?
We are.
All right, eight A.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-one dash one twelve on the state of buildings located at seven fourteen Anne Street in District Five, per resolution twenty-one dash sixty-one. As noticed and advertised on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Motion. Councilwoman Deidre Reed, Mayor Pro Tim, Ricky Gonsalas. Public comment. Do we have any public comment on this item? Don't see any, don't hear any? All right, need a motion to close.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim, Councilwoman Reed. Thank you. Kevin?
Okay, this, this is a trailer on Anne Street. The roof is actually caving in.
Yep.
Oh, there you go.
Yep.
Has caved in.
We have notified the owner of the property and the trailer owner. And I haven't heard from either one.
And the neighbors are complaining about it.
One of the time, one of the time, yeah, yes, sir.
So Jeff, this is not one of the one we looked at last time? The trailer is owned by a different person in the area?
It is. The trailer is owned by one.
But if we did good.
But we knew it.
But we knew it.
But I'm just asking before we get like.
Long as you notify him, you're okay.
That's why I said, that one's coming in the next two weeks. Yeah.
Oh, that's funny.
We got three of those.
Okay. Any, any other discussion, recommendation, action, so we can vote?
Recommend number one.
Okay. Well, we have, well, this is gonna be quick. We have a motion for number one.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Uh, that means this property will be demoed. Any, no other discussion? Please vote your machines. Jeff and Erin, thank you. How efficient was that?
Awesome.
That's awesome.
This is Erin's work, not mine.
Yeah, but this is good. This is good.
Thank you, Erin.
All right. Eight B.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-one dash one thirteen on the state of buildings located at sixteen twelve Bryan Street in District Four, per resolution twenty-one dash sixty-two. As noticed and advertised on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
A motion.
Motion, uh, Mr. Councilwoman Broussard, and who's second it?
I do.
Uh, Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Is there anybody here to comment on this item? Hearing and seeing none, I need a motion to close.
Motion.
Uh, Councilwoman Broussard, Mayor Pro Tim, Ricky Gonsalas, thank y'all. All right, move on to action and vote. Jimmy?
Okay, that trailer, it's busted windows, rotten wood all over. It's just in bad shape. Grass, we, we cutting the grass.
Yes, sir. All right.
Motion for number one.
Right, we have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter and a second by Councilman Swier.
Yeah.
Is there any discussion?
Any, 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 uh.
Comments?
No. No response.
Nobody's respond. Okay. So we've covered all the bases. Uh, then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Great. Eight C.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-one dash one fourteen on the state of buildings located at five one five Dague Street in District Two, per resolution twenty-one sixty-three. As noticed and advertised on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second, Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there anybody here to comment on this property? Hearing and seeing none, motion to close.
Motion.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim, Ricky Gonsalas, and Councilwoman Reed. Action and vote, Jimmy?
All right, this house burnt in December of twenty sixteen.
Go.
So the siding's missing, the doors are all open. He keeps the grass cut, so.
Thank God for that.
He, he keeps the grass cut?
Yes.
I'm gonna motion for number two then. If he's keeping it cut, he might want to tear it down and save us some money.
He hasn't done anything since twenty sixteen.
I understand. Have we ever gave him an, an order to tear it down?
I've talked to him.
Like we're doing now?
I've, I've talked to him a couple of times.
I don't know him, I'm just.
I, and I tried to get him to do something with it, and I, I don't know where he's at now. He hasn't called. We sent him a letter. He, the letter came back unclaimed. I don't know where he's at.
But like you say, he is cutting the grass though, right?
That's all he's doing.
That's all he's doing, right. Well, that's obvious. I mean, the purpose for number two is to.
Is that your district?
Yeah, to give him an option to tear it down.
Give him thirty days.
It gives him thirty days.
That would be December the seventh.
Yeah, because he's never, he's never got a notice of an option to tear it down.
It would be a revisit?
No, that wouldn't be a revisit.
No, if he doesn't, and basically the way number two works, at thirty days and he hadn't torn it down, then you just proceed with tearing it down. You're just giving him one last ditch effort. You give him a reward for cutting the grass.
Yeah.
Is what you're doing.
And let me say, we, 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 we had this issue before, where we, huh?
You give him a reward for cutting the grass. Maybe, maybe you get his attention.
Yeah, we had this issue. Last, last term or something where somebody came back and they said, oh, we missed the, we missed the, um, the meeting and could y'all get it over? It was in, it was in District Five. It was, uh, the last council person issue and we had to go through that whole deal. And that's kind of why this one works, because you, you, you know, you got your chance again. You know?
Okay. Do I have a motion on the floor for, uh, two? Uh, do I have a second?
Jeff.
Okay, Jeff.
I think usually, usually when we're dealing with this, somebody comes and they say, give me time to tear it down. And then we say, okay, thirty days, if you don't, we will. But here, we don't even have anybody doing that. So, you know, I think if we're gonna do this thirty days, this number two option, we need to try to communicate to this guy, he's got thirty days. Because otherwise, it's not gonna happen. Do we have a way to reach him?
Not, I might have a phone number in the, in the system. Or no permit, but I, I, there's no guarantee because he didn't claim the letter. It came back unclaimed.
Marlo, you don't know who this guy is.
No, I don't know who he is, but I'm always thinking about saving it for, saving that money for another house. To get torn down. And if thirty days. If he, if, if thirty days, if we can hold off thirty days, if we get to it on day twenty-nine, we won. But if not, then we're, we're in the demolition process.
I, I'm just saying, if we're gonna give him time, he needs to know we're giving him time.
I, I, like I said, I don't know him. I just thought it was a good option for this house.
Quick question.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, so the thirty days, just for reference, thirty days starts from this meeting, if it's approved, correct?
If that's what the motion is, yeah.
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 Okay, Dustin?
So the question I have, Jimmy, so if he doesn't, Marlo, I'm not disagreeing with you one bit at all. Uh, so if he doesn't, if you don't have a contact number, you can't contact him by phone, you go to send him another letter. How long does it take for him to get that letter and then respond to you?
Before I get the letter back? Hang on. Yeah, sometimes it takes four weeks. For me to get the letter back.
Get a certified letter.
I, I.
There's a thirty days right there.
Do I waste another seven dollars sending him another certified letter when the last one came back?
Right.
Right, but do you take a chance? And I don't gamble, but I know a little bit about it.
I mean, it's.
Take a chance in putting up seven dollars to possibly save five thousand?
It's been five years.
So I don't know.
It's been five years. Thirty days.
Well, we would have torn it down by the number one now.
Yeah, we're gonna tear it down anyway.
Yeah, so if we give it thirty days, maybe somebody sees it on TV, maybe somebody reacts, you know, we, maybe we try to find him. And then if we don't, we'll tear it down anyway.
Because I mean, my, again, and we all know this.
Probably nothing's gonna happen.
Nothing probably gonna happen, but we also know if he cutting it, he got some care somewhere, don't know what it is, don't know how much. When we tear it down, it goes on his tax, on the taxes, right?
Yeah.
So if he got some care somewhere, he need to know that it goes on his taxes. And maybe he may say, well, I might as well save two thousand dollars on my tax for this house. So I'm just saying, it's this number two for that house? You know, and he like it? I think it's a good option personally.
You could post a notice, hey, you cutting the grass. Jimmy Landry.
Was better than nothing. Better than nothing. People put a sign, you remember, you remember people put a sign about me once, I went and nailed a sign under it. They called me. I mean, it worked.
Yeah.
It was crazy, but it worked. Yes, ma'am.
The, this has come up a couple of, uh, couple of months ago. That person, if they saw it, they saw it back then, which gave him sixty days to do something with it, and they haven't yet.
Right, I understand.
This is not gonna change that, I don't think.
But it makes it official.
You know, maybe we should have a sign made. Signs are cheap. We could have a sign made that when we do the option.
Let me tell you about the signs. Let me tell you about the signs.
You can nail up a sign on that house?
I nailed seven signs up. I got four left. They take the signs down and they take the signs. They don't.
Okay.
I, you know, if I keep having public works making the signs, that's their time.
Why don't we just get a cardboard sign? Just get something cheap. Let's, let's find a cheaper, a cheaper version of a sign. Not, not with a stain, not with just something that you nail it on the house. If we go to another, we ain't gonna, hopefully, we're trying to clean our town up.
Yeah.
We're trying to protect the people who live around these houses. That's the point. We're not picking on somebody. We're servicing the people who live around a house that is affecting the neighborhood. So maybe we try cardboard sign and we just stick it up there. At least it's worth, you know, it's only thirty days. It's, it's worth a shot. But I don't want the public work signs that they make. I want to save that for street signs and other signs we need. But we might be able to find a cheaper version and, you know, if they see the sign, great. If they don't, we're gonna tear it down anyway.
So the sign will say that if this house isn't torn down by November fifth, the city will tear it down.
Yeah. Then you're also sending a message to, I don't care if the sign stays up for two days, you just send a message to the neighbors that you're gonna do something.
Right.
You know what I mean? It's, it's a win-win.
If not, then we need to take that option off.
Yeah, because you gotta be able to use every option. We just need to flesh it out, you know?
It'll be a good test of it.
Yeah, yeah, let's just see what happens.
Yeah.
Like I said, I'm not a gambler, but I, you know.
Okay, is there anybody else who wants?
Good idea, Mr. Marlo.
I think I had a first and a second, and then we started discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I made the motion and then.
I think she's seconding it. Uh-uh, and it definitely wasn't me.
Mr. Broussard seconded.
I think Mr. Broussard. Somebody seconded because I did have, I did have a first and a second.
You did.
Yeah, well, we got, we have more discussion.
Yes, sir.
So Marlo, just so to clarify, if the residence is being cut and we're in demolition, we're not automatically giving number two, correct?
No, no, that's what I'm doing.
Okay.
That's what, that's what I'm doing. I'm not suggesting that everybody else do it.
Okay.
Because it's about saving the city money at the end of the day, so we can get some of these houses demolished. That's my point.
But technically, we're gonna get reimbursed, right?
Well, we, we don't know that. It goes on their taxes, but you don't know when.
Technically, it's just theoretical.
Yeah, theoretically, we will. Yeah, yeah. Take, take that and try to spend it. Uh, any other discussion?
But if you tear it down, we just got paid.
Yes, sir.
True.
Yeah, then we can do another one.
I mean, again, I'm not a gambler, but.
Well, you're not taking too much of a chance. It's okay. Any other discussion? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much. Madam Clerk? Next property.
Public hearing in action, resolution number twenty-one dash one fifteen on the state of buildings located at one thirty-six West Dale Street in District Three, per resolution twenty-one dash sixty-four. As noticed and advertised on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
I need a motion to open this public hearing.
Motion.
Motion by Councilwoman Broussard, second by Councilman Swier. Is there anybody here to comment on this property?
Put the picture up. You got the picture up on that one? I don't know if it's even mine.
Oh.
It's across the street from my district. It's in, uh, Deidre.
Actually, it's not. It's in yours because my district stops in Maro, Morocco.
Politic on that side at all.
I know. I, I actually go to those people, but they're not in my district because I'm the one turned it in. And then Jimmy told me it was District Three.
Think it's in mine, but I'll take it. It's a good thing it's gotta go.
Hang on, was there, yeah, let me finish. Was there anybody here to comment on this item? I don't think there was. Okay, then I need a motion to close the public hearing. Then we can talk about all y'all.
I gained some more people to go talk to.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim, Gonsalas, and who is the second? Please help me. I'm laughing. Councilwoman Deidre Ledbetter. Okay, now we can talk about it. Mr. Broussard, you want to talk about it?
Well, I talked to most about getting that thing going, but I didn't know, oh, I'm gonna find out how many, how much is my district on that side.
Yes, sir.
I need some more clients.
So my district ends in Morocco Lane, which is right behind it.
It has to go. I talked five times for it anyway. My neighbors got tired looking at it.
Yeah.
It speaks for itself. Nobody in here, and the picture speaks for itself. Bye-bye, gone, number one.
Okay, any other, uh, any other comment?
I think this is also the house that Jimmy said, the guy said he couldn't believe we were gonna tear it down his house.
Everybody has an opinion.
Yeah.
No, I ain't gonna ask that crazy question. Otherwise, if he lived, then also.
So we talked to the guy?
Yeah, he called the office. He called the office. He couldn't understand why we were putting it on the demo list.
The neighbors called. And I said it was another district, but I'll call for you.
Good. Any?
It's actually his district, but they called me because they think it's District Five.
Any other, any other comment? No, none? Then I would ask you to please vote your machines.
So wait, we voted for number one, right?
Yeah, no, we didn't do the option. I'm sorry, you're right.
Number one.
Okay, I'm sorry. You're right.
Option one?
Yes.
I second.
Already.
We already had a motion.
We already had a motion to second, then we just got off into the.
The weeds.
No, they didn't. We didn't. We didn't. That's why I seconded.
You are right. Thank you. So Mr. Broussard made the motion and Councilwoman Ledbetter made the second. You are right. We, we got off in the weeds. Okay, no further comment? Then please vote your machines. Thank you. Thank you, Deidre. I get caught up in all the discussions and.
I'm surprised you say my district.
Madam Clerk? Eight E.
Public hearing in action on resolution number twenty-one one sixteen on the state of buildings located at one oh three Doris in District Three, per resolution twenty-one dash sixty-five. As noticed and advertised on September twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
Do I have a motion to open this public hearing?
Motion.
Motion. Councilwoman Broussard second, Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is anybody here to speak on this property? Yes, sir, come up.
I need all of you to look at that picture.
Yes, sir.
You see how that house looks like it has a hump, like a, an old horse? This guy is so good with photography. He, if he can make that house look, look so bad to you. And I asked this councilman here to go by the house and look at it. So many hurricanes passed by that house. You see, this here, somebody sent somebody to do that destruction. I don't know where, which location is this?
North Street.
This is new stuff.
That's, that's.
New stuff.
That's under the carport.
Yeah, did you go inside and see how solid that house is?
No.
Okay. You said you went inside that last time, and you said there was people going in and out. This house, if you go look at the house, it doesn't look like the way he pictured that house to be. I boarded that house in the back, and that's why you see that wood. Some people been going over there, and I don't know who's been sending them, to tear some of that carport to make that house look bad. I don't know what to tell you. It's, it looks like Mr. Broussard, uh, has some kind of grudge on, on me and my family. Sir, you told this council, when you demolished my house, the family house, you told this council that the guy came to you and told you he's so sick of looking at our house. And he would like to go into his, uh, dump truck and demolish that house himself. Ladies and gentlemen, my house now is a parking lot for that same guy he's telling you that the guy was sick of looking at. It's a parking lot for, for three trucks and a, and a bus that our, my family's house. You know, sometimes I look at you, sir, you know, campaigning so hard. I said, you must be benefiting out of this job. You must be doing some benefits out of that shit.
Not about the person.
Sir, you bringing my stuff here, it's not about my house, it's about me.
Get him in line.
You know?
You're right.
Get him in line what? I am in line. I'm defending my investment. You people brought nothing but death and destruction, our people dying, and you destroying our houses. You destroying our investment. And I promised myself, I'm gonna have the FBI investigating each one of you. Some of you are good people, but the, the rest is not. And I'm gonna go to court, and this gentleman here is gonna be number one that I'm gonna take into court. And I'm gonna ask the Lord to question each one of you on what you're doing. Mr. Gonsalas, you remember, we are friends. And we helped getting you elected. When I saw you shaking hands with the mayor, that funny shake, I know I am in trouble. I know we are in trouble. That handshake when inauguration, you know? Why can't you guys go to the federal government like, like the mayor of Lafayette? Let me finish. That, that mayor Lafayette went and got twenty million dollars from the federal government to help the people that, that, you know, fixing their houses. Why can't y'all go and do that? Uh, the city of Broussard got five million dollars. What did we get from the federal government? Nothing. And it went into demolition. This house stood up to all kind of, uh, you know, hurricanes. You need to ask this gentleman here, God on earth, why he is not giving us permits? Why he, he makes my wife cry so hard? She asked him for permits. I asked him for permits. We go there and they say, under this name, I'm a very good person. This name is an honorable name. Under this name, there's not gonna be no permits issued. Why is that? Can you ask him, why is that? Why does he go there and steal my stuff from my, my, my houses? Why does he there and, and, and destroy my houses? Then take a picture.
All right. That's enough.
Who's that, that?
You.
Yeah. Yeah. I know you're gonna vote yes. Go ahead and demolish.
Sir. Sir.
All right, hang on. Thank you for your comments. Do I have a motion to close our public hearing?
I'm moved.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman, Mayor Pro Tim, Ricky Gonsalas, and Councilwoman Ledbetter. Thank y'all. Now we go to action and vote. Jeff, you had your hand up?
I just wanted to hear what Jimmy thinks needs to be done. And then hear whether or not anybody's willing to do it.
Yeah.
According to the code, the house would have to be appraised. And if the cost of remodeling is over fifty percent of the home, everything has to be brought up to code. And the condition that the house is in, I think it would have to be, it's over fifty percent. So by the time you get an electrician and a plumber in there, air conditioning. If it's, if it's over fifty percent cost, I don't know what the inside looks like. I didn't go in. So, but on the outside, it needs substantial work. The porch, all needs to be redone, the back siding, the carport needs to be reframed. This looks like termite, termite damage.
This was nothing like that before you took a picture.
Yes, sir.
How long has the property been in this condition? Would you know, Jimmy?
A year?
What are your plans with the property?
Sir.
Is my question.
Uh, this house here, some people go there and do the destruction, then they call Jimmy Landry.
No, I'm asking you, what are your plans with the?
I would like to fix it, but he would not give us no permits. Ask him. I have to threaten with the federal court for him to give me a permit to work on the house. This is God on earth. He told my wife he can go into her bedroom at any time he, he wants, and he went to his office. I'm not lying about the man. He went to his office and he brought her the, uh, what do you call it, the ordinance. He brought her the ordinance that allow him to do that, and I have the ordinance that took a picture. And it says to the maximum allowable, uh, thing for him, he can go and do it at any time. It's in the ordinance. You need to look at that ordinance. And I would like to know if he can go in any one of those ladies' bedrooms anytime you wish.
We're talking about a house. Talking about a house.
I know what I'm saying. You need to know what we going through with this man.
You can see through the house all the way.
I don't go inside the house unless I'm asked.
Did you tell her that you have the right and the power?
I was talking to her about the outside of the house.
But you said you have the power to go anywhere, and here is the ordinance. I got the ordinance here.
So what are you?
You need to look at it.
What are you willing to do with this house, and how long do you need to do it?
First of all, ask him the question, say, will you give those people permits?
I need an appraisal, and I need to, a detailed list of what he's doing. Because I need to make sure if it's a substantial improvement, and that's how I tell him. I need a list, contractors and carpenters, plumbers, electricians, on what it's gonna cost to fix it. But I need that appraisal to be able to tell if the cost of construction is over fifty percent of the house.
It, it's my loss, not your loss.
Okay.
I, I'm willing to put the money in the house. This investment means a lot to me.
Let me have my piece.
Jimmy, question.
Mayor Protim.
Has this individual requested a permit, and have you told him what he's required to get the permit?
For this house? No.
So he has never requested a permit?
Not for this house.
Okay, you just, you just said?
I haven't given him permits in the past.
Hang on, hang on.
I'm just asking, I'm, I think there's a, I'm just trying to find a communication lane.
Ask him if he denied me many, uh, permits.
That's not what I'm asking. I'm more about this house.
We, we want this house.
Yeah, I'm more about this house.
Getting way off the subject.
Yeah, we want this house. It's okay, we want this house.
That's all I want, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Broussard? On the house on Walton, sir. No, 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 I wanna get it straight. The house on Walton, didn't y'all come in here and we gave y'all thirty days? Sixty days, almost ninety days for y'all to come back at least and board that house? Now, this is no different than the house on Walton. I gave you ninety days. You were talking about me on that house.
You didn't give me none of that.
Hang on, this is not.
You know, he's arguing with me. You didn't give me none of that.
We gave you the time to do it. Now this house right here, you can see through and through it.
Stay on this house.
This house right here, for over a year, you can look through the whole house every day.
Who asked them those people to do that?
We asked, I asked the city to get the person that owns this house to board it. Now, it never got boarded. But I can see it never.
There was wood on it.
Hang on, it's not.
So in a nice thing, we didn't treat you, we didn't treat you wrong on your last house.
Sir, you would never treat somebody like me right. You know that. Yeah.
The last house, we give him two months to come back.
Let's talk about this.
Yeah, well, he can fix that up, and within sixty days, he can do it. After that is, I'm gonna give you the same thing I gave you on Walton.
You don't have to give me nothing. I'll have the board give me that.
Yeah, that's one right now. Tear it down.
I'm not begging you with that.
Hang on, one, one at a time, one at a time. So you have a motion you wanna make?
Well, I can ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
So, um.
Have you report doing that?
Hang on, hang on.
So, sir, um, is it possible for you to get Jimmy the things that he needs so that we can determine whether or not the house can be fixed within a reasonable timeframe? I'm not sure what that reasonable timeframe will be. We'll have to ask Jimmy, but he's saying he needs an appraisal, which he also needs the plumber and the electrician to give costs. Is that possible? Jimmy, what's a good timeframe? Because we got, I mean, we're gonna talk through this, let's show him, tell him what the option would be.
Hey, he's out of his chair.
How much time do you think?
Sixty days, he should have something.
Sixty days.
Hey, look.
Okay, so I'm just. If, if there's a.
I'm getting the same option. I'd like to know, I'm trying to give him the same option we gave him on Walton Street.
I'm, I'm trying to look at number three.
Do what you gotta do.
Understand.
And get this house back again. Uh, we'll see some, something that got done on the other house on Walton. We never saw a thing got done, and then sixty days.
Yeah.
If we see something getting done on this house, it's sixty days.
There was nothing wrong with that house.
Okay.
Sixty days, get it together.
Yeah.
Dr. Dell.
Yes, ma'am.
So Jimmy's saying, um, we, we have three options, and number three is the option we were looking at. We haven't decided yet. But I'm just trying to figure out, if you're given an op, an opportunity to get an appraisal, get an electrician and a, a plumber to come in and give estimates to him, are you able to do that in a reasonable timeframe to get it back to him? Because he would need that in order for us to make a decision whether or not the house can be fixed.
Ma'am, I asked this councilman, I said, he's supposed to be my friend. I asked him, I said, can you please do me a favor? For you, before you go in front of the council and vote, yes, I'm gonna demolish that thing. Look, I'm having hard, hard problems. I'm drawing out. I asked him, can you please? That's what I would do. Before he pushed me to vote, yes, demolish this man's house, I'm gonna go look at the house. That house stood up to all kinda hurricanes. Every hurricane that house stood up to. But he couldn't, that house could not stand up the Jimmy Land.
Okay, so I still need to answer to the question though. Are you willing to get him what he needs so that he can make a decision on whether or not the house has to come up to code if you're gonna fix it?
Ma'am, the question is here. First of all, y'all need to ask him to give me permit like everybody else.
I know, but before you get a permit to do anything? Before you, before you get a permit, he needs, he's saying that you have to have an appraisal. You have to have the cost from an appraisal.
I'm not gonna get no appraisal. If y'all demolish that house, demolish it. I'm not gonna put no much money.
If we do option three and give him sixty days?
He's saying he's not gonna do that.
Well, but then. Hang on, hang on, it's okay. But if we decide that as our option, and we give him sixty days, option three, if it doesn't happen at the end of sixty days?
Well, I just asked him about the appraisal. He said he's not putting that money into it.
I'm not gonna get no appraisal. I'm gonna stop working on the house.
So that's a done deal.
Okay, well then that's a moot point. Then there's nothing I can do.
Yes, sir.
I'm, uh. I'm in favor of option three, because the way I see this whole process, it's a waiting game. It's a waiting game. So if you got all this time we waiting on, why not give the people an option again to tear it down? It been an eyesore for a year, two years, however long it been an eyesore, to the people in the district. Give him that option three. I'm saying that for me. And if he don't do it, then the council take action. Because I've never seen a house that we put on the list get tore down in the timely manner that we would like to see it tore down anyway. That's my point.
Well, that is what we trying to do.
That's my whole point, and I understand that. But, and then the other point for me
Yes, sir.
is, he, for me, option one and option two, Aaron did a good job on. Option one for me is, if your house falling down and you didn't show up, you hadn't been cutting grass, we doing all this. Option one, no brainer. Option two is, you peeping at the house, you been around there doing something. You're doing something, you know about your house. You know it's in bad shape. Option two is, okay, we gonna put your note up? If you don't tear it down in thirty days, we ain't even revisiting it. It's tore down per our vote. Option three is, if the man come in here and say, I'm here, give him option three like we done in the past. And then guess what? But this time after we've given him, it don't matter whether he get the, that ain't our problem. Our problem is what option we gonna give him, and if we gonna give him a chance to go back at his house, what do you decide to do? And then with option three, he can do two or three. With option three, he can do two or three. If he go to his house and he said, man, you know what? It's too much money. I'm gonna tear it down, then he'll do it himself. When he come back here on December the seventh, he have to have proven to us that he's done what we have asked him to do, period. You know, and no, no, I like Jimmy's always been, Jimmy does a good job in my eyesight, and he got a tough job. But if, if, make sure you get his permit. If you don't, if you don't get a permit and you don't do it, then that's another insurance form that says you ain't get your permit.
Dr. Dell, that's.
You ain't get your permit, and you had your time, and you still hadn't done it. What's your excuse now? That's, that's, that's my take on it. Cause I'm not gonna say I don't care, cause I do care, cause I have some of them houses in my district, you know? Not particularly yours, a lot of houses.
Thank you. Let's, uh, let's not, let's, let's now.
I need to, a comment, please.
You made a lot of comments.
I know, before you ask me to do anything, ask him to respect us, and when we come here to treat us with respect. He got a girl in his office. She has nothing but courage and uncles.
Okay.
You know?
We worried about the house.
I need a permit when I ask one. I need to get one.
Uh, before you talk, as you've talked a couple times, Dustin had his hand up. I'm gonna keep moving us around. Councilman Swir?
Thank you. So Ms., Ms. Deedee did just point out something that I heard from the gentleman. So like Jimmy was saying, he needs to have an appraisal done to even determine the percentage of, cause by code, if it meets or more than fifty percent, then he has to do everything up to code. But he made a comment that alluded to the fact that he doesn't wanna spend the money on getting the appraisal. So we're kinda back at, okay, so is he gonna put the money and fix in the house if you don't wanna give the money? If you don't wanna pay the money, give the appraisal.
If that house cost me a, a, a hundred thousand dollars, that's my loss. That's not Jimmy's loss. If that house is gonna cost me a huge amount of money, it's on me. That's why I buy those houses. I buy them and fix it. You see what I'm saying? This is a solid house. I'm a civil engineer. I am a constru, a construction engineer, civil engineer. I did geotechnical, environmental, and structural. Nobody can, can deny, I mean, or, or argue with me on that.
Right, but all I was, all I, all I'm stating is that if you're not gonna spend the money, if you're gonna have to get an appraisal, you're not gonna spend the money on to get an appraisal, why, how are we gonna determine whether you're not gonna spend the money to fix the house?
I, if you give me my permit, I'll start on that house. And also, another thing also, sir, every time I go and fix a house, all of sudden the windows are gone, the sink is gone, and all that. I need also some protection.
I know that, I know that.
I need some protection.
So, Dr. Dell?
Okay, one, one at a time. I'm trying to keep order.
I'm sorry.
Let everybody talk. Are you done? Okay, I did, I just wanna make sure you were done.
Kind of support what she was trying to say.
I agree, I agree.
I wanna just kinda go back to it one more time. So, um, and are, before you can get a permit, if I'm understanding Jimmy correctly, before you can get a permit to fix your house, you have to bring in an appraisal and an estimate.
I mean, if y'all wanna vote to demolish it, I am not gonna spend money on, on appraisal and other stuff.
Okay, all right, then so.
If y'all wanna demolish it, demolish it, but I will have the court stop.
He's saying no.
Y'all, it's another point to that, but I'm gonna leave that alone, cause this ain't the code of law, but I'm gonna leave that alone.
So, I mean, Marlon, just bring it up.
My point, no, my point, you wanna hit? My point is.
Yeah, because we need to make sure we're making a good decision.
Don't matter, it's what he does by time this.
He does nothing.
Okay, so, but, I mean, we're, we're having a discussion now. We have to listen.
I'm not on nobody's side. All I'm saying is, what he says tonight does not matter. If he tell you, if he mad tonight and he tell you I ain't gonna do nothing, you say, it don't matter. If you wake up tomorrow morning happy and say, you know what? They were right. Let me go get my things, so I can start my process. We made a bad decision tonight based on emotional
Okay.
stuff that's happening here tonight.
And, and definitely not trying to be emotional, just trying to make sure we understand, that he understands.
One at a time, one at a time. I know, I just, you know.
I just want him.
Not, not your emotion.
We the team.
We ain't worrying about your emotion.
No, no, no.
Sometimes people say things when they emotional.
Yes.
And they, all right, and they, they say something they didn't mean because they emotional. But what the law says, what you told us you were gonna do is what we gonna go by. Not what come out your mouth and over here. Cause people say things come out their mouth all the time and they don't follow up. On both sides. They say what they gonna do, and they don't do it, and they say what they not gonna do, and they do it. All the time in this setting, so.
No, I, I agree. I just.
I don't think we can use that as a judgment to say, oh, don't, don't give him the time per option three. I don't think we can use what he's saying tonight about no appraisal tonight.
Okay, hang on, one at a time.
Okay.
Okay, uh.
Done.
You're done? Okay, uh. Councilwoman Ledbetter?
We've been listening for quite some time. This property, I, I pass by it almost daily, going to my house. It's been like that for much longer than a year. It's been years it's been like that. And anybody who wants to can go in and out of that house. It's not like, um, anything has been done to it within the last three, four years at all. It's just falling down. And it's dangerous. That's one of the main things. It's dangerous because people go in and people come out. So I'm hearing that, um, the owner is here, which is a good thing. When somebody tells you something, you should believe it. He said, this is the time for him to speak up. If he needed more time, he asked for more time, you know, and say what he's gonna do. He's saying he's not gonna do it. He just said he wasn't gonna do it.
What is it? I said? I didn't, I'm not gonna do it.
You wasn't gonna do the process. You weren't gonna go through the process. You didn't ask.
I said, I'm gonna take care of that house.
He didn't ask us for any time.
But what I need you to make a motion to have Jimmy give me a permit, two motions and vote on it.
Make a motion for a permit.
Yeah, I'd like to have a motion of, give me a permit.
But you can't get a permit without doing the survey. I mean, um, the appraisal.
See, he put that appraisal thing just like, you know.
No, it's, no, it's part of the process.
Okay.
I still think, my thing is.
I know, we gonna.
My, my thing is we not debate the process.
I know, let's see who.
We not debating the process.
All right, uh, are, are you finished?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, thank you. Uh, Mr. Broussard, you have your hand up. I'll go back to you.
Gave me a lot of time to calm down. Mr. Dell, you calm down too, please, sir.
Sir.
All this goes back, no, no, I'm talking now. I'm talking now.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, talk.
Boarding up houses, Mr. Mayor. Ten, twelve times I've called in how we board up houses or get together with the people.
We don't board them up.
We can call the people and get them boarded?
Board them up.
No more boarding?
Nope, that doesn't work. We've never boarded one house up yet.
Well, we can't get on the people when we call in the board. They, they can't do it.
That's not an option.
Well, we looking through and through that house for three years. I mean, through and through, the whole house. Up from the street, and it's not us getting on you, sir. They got eight or ten that, 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 on that street that are on my case every week.
Sir, how was the demolition?
No.
Not to be.
It's what to do at that house. So we giving you sixty days like I, we gave you on Walton Street. You do something with it or you don't. I'm like Mr. Marlowe here. We gonna cover our back end right here by giving you sixty days. You can call all the lawyers you want. We giving you sixty days to do whatever you want.
I promise you're gonna hear from the FBI, my friend.
Now, in sixty days, it's gonna be another one to tear down.
Especially you.
Sixty days.
So the motion you're making is a?
Give him six, number two.
Well, no, number two is thirty days, so you're on number three.
Sixty.
Okay, so you wanna give him?
All the time we can do.
You wanna give him sixty days, then we revisit it at sixty days if nothing's been done.
So we, we revisit December the seventh.
I need him to give me a permit before I start anything.
Dr. Dell, let us, they trying to throw you a lifeline, so grab onto it, okay? December seventh, they saying come back and we're gonna revisit this thing.
Okay, what if he decided I'm not gonna give you no permit?
I can't give him a permit unless I get the appraisal, so I know, and, and have the cost of construction to know what he's gonna do.
I'm gonna do the work myself.
Okay, hang on, good, so. Exactly. Before I, so. That's your, your motion is to give him sixty days?
Very, very nice of me.
Okay, we'll just, okay, just stop, just stop.
You don't have to give me a.
Dr. Dell, that's, that's.
Grant me something.
Just trying to, okay, so do I have a second?
I second.
I have a second. Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Ledbetter. So we have a first and a second for sixty days, which is December the seventh. Do we have, is there any other comments?
Just wanna make, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I wanna vote, but could you make sure Mr. Dell understand that he does nothing without appraisal?
Yeah, the way, the way the, we can't change the way the codes are written.
Make sure that.
What?
Well, Jimmy tells you what you have to do.
He said I have to bring some other people. I'm doing the work myself. I work. I'm seventy-five-year-old man with cancer and heart problems and all kinds of, I work. This is my investment, this is my hard work. You know, for him to demolish my, my investment.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion and a second.
So I'm, I was gonna say.
Yes, ma'am.
Clearly, number three, we're going to have to make sure we include the process and make sure that the people understand that that is the process before the permit is issued. Because I think there's a communication issue right now. We're giving it sixty days, but he's gotta get that stuff to Jimmy, otherwise there will not be a building permit for him to work on the house. And we don't want him to, Dr. Dell, we don't want you to leave tonight without understanding what you need to do.
Why can't he bring a, uh, one of his friends, uh, to do the, uh, evaluate?
Because that's not how it works.
He can, he can pay.
The city, the city doesn't do that kind of work.
I know.
Okay, yes, sir.
Hang on, thank you. Uh, so any other comments? Then I would please ask you to vote your machines.
I also for you, I would like for y'all to look at that, that ordinance that allows him to come in the middle of the night to my bedroom.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
What, demolish?
Six, you have sixty days.
Option number three.
You have sixty days. You have sixty days.
He's not gonna have to, because he's not gonna give me a permit.
Alright, moving on.
As well, voted demolish.
I'll stop.
Item eight F.
Public hearing and action on resolution number twenty-one dash one seventeen on the state of buildings located at eight oh nine Edna Street in District Five, per resolution twenty-one dash sixty-six, as noticed and advertised on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
I need a motion to open our public hearing.
Motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Councilwoman Reed, Councilwoman Ledbetter, uh, is there anybody here to represent this property? No, don't see anybody? Then I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion. Second.
Councilwoman Reed and, uh, Councilwoman Swir. Thank you, Jimmy, let's, uh, talk about action and vote.
Okay, this one was given, I want to say was given to, uh, Joe Burke.
That's the back of it or the front of it?
Wait, what?
That's the front.
I think that's the front.
That's the front.
That's the porch.
That's the front porch.
This is the back.
That's the back.
Yeah. And I promise you, the only reason why the grass look like it's started to cut is because they're cutting it.
Oh, we cut the grass.
Yeah, I send this in all the time, so, yeah.
I, I know you do.
I know this is a secret here for me.
It's okay.
Or the neighbors across the street will be happy.
Oh, I know. Oh, my goodness.
So, we have a...
What are we gonna do, Dee Dee?
We have a recommendation?
Number one.
Number one, thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman Reed, and a second by Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there any discussion on this item?
None at all.
None at all?
Wait, who?
No discussion? Then I ask you, please...
Joe got this one?
Wait, let me just make sure before we vote.
Wait, let me check on the notice here.
Okay.
Just, I mean, they have rodents coming out there, going in other people's yards, it's a mess.
I've got his responses here, that he sent me.
You know nothing's gonna happen in the next sixty days.
Not a thing, not a thing. He doesn't want to, he doesn't, he's intelligent, he doesn't want to. Anyway. So, okay. So, we had good service, we good?
No, I'm not sure. We have the, I don't, I don't see that Joe, Joe sent me a list of the ones he did.
Alright.
So, does another notice go out to him to remind him about the December seventh deadline? Okay. I suspect he's gonna show up here again.
Same, same thing.
Yeah.
We've had, I mean, last four years, we've had this more than once, the same, same kind of stuff.
Okay, yeah, good. Oh, good.
We had this last term.
Okay.
And, you know, the same thing, and he never really...
He owns like a hundred properties throughout the city.
Well, Jimmy's stealing.
Oh, I know. Who would even want to get? That was a terrible thing to say. That was a terrible thing to say.
That's how, I mean, I'm, I'm, that's how it was last time, I just didn't talk.
I couldn't believe he went there, though. Because that's the kind of conversation he used to have with you, in your office. If he feels like that's it, that conversation needs to happen in your office.
My office was way crazier than that. I tried.
Okay, what are we doing?
We sent this to Joe, Joe sent me today the list of letters that he sent out. Eight oh nine is not on that list.
Okay.
So, I say...
Pull it.
Revisit December seventh.
Okay, well, since we have a technical difficulty, we will, if that's okay with everybody. Um, do I need a motion and a second?
I'll, I'll email Joe tonight.
I need a motion and a second to revisit?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Just the motion to go to number three.
Yeah, it's, it's number three, yeah.
Okay, alright, well then, the more of that, even simplifies it even more. Somebody make a motion to go to number three?
I'm gonna move that to be number three.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, thank you. I know that's not the outcome you wanted, but, you know, we'll get it.
And I'm sorry, we, we just, I gotta deal with you.
So, I have a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Ricky Goslin, I have a second by Councilwoman Dee Dee Reed, and we will revisit this property. Uh, if everybody's cool, please vote your machines. Thank you.
I won't be alone on that date, boy.
No, Mr. Bruce, you won't be alone on that date. That's pretty funny. Okay, we're moving to item eight G, Madam Clerk.
Public hearing and action, resolution number twenty-one dash one eighteen on the state of buildings located at eight eleven Edna Street in District Five, per resolution twenty-one dash sixty-seven, as noticed and advertised on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Motion, Councilwoman Dee Dee Reed and Councilwoman Ledbetter. Is there anybody here to represent this property? Uh, yes, sir.
This is the property, um, Joe contacted these folks by mail. I got a call from an Isabella Wu, her name is W U. This is a company that bought this property from Civic Source in June. So, they just bought it. And when I talked to them, they asked us if they could have more time to take a look at this, because they say they haven't actually been on the property and they've never even seen it. They went online, looked at the photographs, they didn't look too bad, they thought they're getting a bargain, so they bought it through Civic Source in June. So, I'm pretty sure that when they bought it in June, it looked just like that.
Yes, because it's been like that for a long time.
So, I told her, I said, you know, even though we sold it to you, we sold it as is, and you need to fix it. And she says, yeah, but we have, we have a contractor in Baton Rouge that deals with these properties that they buy, and he said, she said, we need more time. So, I talked to the mayor about it, I talked to Dee Dee real briefly about it. I'd like to continue this one to December seventh, and give them a chance to come before us then.
Because we did sell it to them.
We did sell it.
Yes, sir.
You're right, now you brought that up, we did sell them the property.
We sold them the property, yeah.
Some of them, like in their situation, like they show flip or flop.
Yeah, it's a flop, but, but let's just wait and let them tell us it's a flop.
I agree.
However, are we gonna make sure they understand that they're not here on December seventh to represent their property? We're gonna move on it?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
What's your name?
Any other discussion?
They prob, they probably won't be here. Have y'all ever dealt with these companies?
No, this is somebody new.
These surplus properties?
Some people do, and they redeem them, but this, you know...
And then they just let them go.
Yeah, the, yeah, because there's also another one in my neighborhood, well, my mom's neighborhood like that. However, we're trying to clean up our town, they invested in it, they don't come in sixty days, it's number one.
So, we'll probably be acting on this, yeah.
They spent like fourteen thousand dollars to buy this thing. Ouch.
Yeah. Costs of doing business.
But they, you know, Joe contacted them, they called Joe, Joe sent me the information, I talked to her, we've been back and forth with email. I mean, they're responsive, it's not like they're ignoring us. They just don't know what they got.
Question.
Yes, yes.
So, Jimmy, like, so in a situation like this, when an investor comes and buys a property that wants to do a flip, he has to get the appraisal and bring, because like, apparently, it's gonna take more than fifty percent, I would think.
And I sat down and talked with him.
And you, right, so...
Yeah, well, I, that's, that's what they purchased the house for fifteen. I don't think it's gonna appraise for fifteen.
That's why I asked the question.
I can use the sale price.
You can use the sale price?
I can use it, but they're gonna spend more than seven thousand dollars fixing that house.
Of course.
So, everything's gonna have to be brought up to code.
Yeah, so...
The contractor'll know that.
Yeah.
Right.
Because if they come in and say, I want a permit, all my people are licensed, and I'm bringing the whole thing up to code, you can do that.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. But you see, I can't even get a list of what the other one's doing.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, that's very different.
Yeah, different circumstance. Uh, any other questions or comments? So, we need a motion and a second. I think it sounds like we're going to number three again, but I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, so...
Number three.
Thank you very much, number three. And, uh, I think, uh, Councilwoman Ledbetter beat you to the punch. So, we have a motion and a second, please vote your machines. Thank y'all very much.
And our party's getting bigger and bigger, I'm glad I'm not the only one on the subject.
Not gonna be the only one, Mr. Bruce, all right? And we'll bring the popcorn. Uh, let's go to eight H.
Public hearing and action, resolution number twenty-one dash one nineteen on the state of buildings located at seven twenty A Bear Street in District Two, per resolution twenty-one dash sixty-eight, as noticed and advertised on September twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
Do I have a motion to open our public hearing?
Motion.
Motion, Councilman Lewis, second, Councilman Swir. Is there anybody here to comment on this property? Seeing and hearing, nobody? Uh, I need a motion to close our public hearing.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Councilwoman Reed and Councilman Lewis. Okay, action and vote, where we at?
Okay, we notified the one owner, and we got the le, we, he signed for the letter, so, then you're about to meet him.
Okay. Alright. This is in District Two?
But he...
Councilman Lewis?
But he hasn't called.
He hasn't called you? But he sent his letter back?
Yep, I got the green card back.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna go for option two. I mean, you got in contact with him, now he, he got an option to tear it down, or we tear it down in thirty days.
He should've come, got the permit to tear it down already, Marlowe.
Well, yeah, and so, we giving it to him tonight, we giving him his option tonight. I mean, this, it seems clear cut, common to me that if they, if you can contact him, then you give him thirty days to save the city some money. That's, that's how I'ma roll on that one. I mean, what is it on there for? So, to me, number two is, is, is simple. Number two is simple. It's three sentences, but it's actually two. Either you tear it down in less than thirty days, or we will in thirty days.
So, can I ask you a question? So, they got the letter, they signed for, they, they, okay, so, let me finish, okay, hold up. No, wait a minute. But they, they signed for the letter, they signed for the letter, they knew they should be here tonight.
Hey, one, wait, one at a time, this is getting kinda crazy, one at a time.
Well, he didn't let me finish my question.
I know, then he jumped in, so I'm just kinda keeping everybody cool.
Let me finish, Marlowe.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
So, they signed for, they knew they had, they should come here tonight to tell us if they were going to tear the house down themselves, or if they want the city to do it, and they did not show. So, why are we giving them thirty more days?
Because it's on this list.
Oh, my goodness, okay.
Because it's on the list, because it's an option, tonight, because I didn't know that, we know this tonight, though.
I bet it's in the letter.
I'm just saying, we know it tonight, and that's what we here for, on official business. So, in my official capacity, I would like to give them the thirty days, so that hopefully, with the hopes of saving the city some money. We always talking about saving some money, we can save some money and do something else. If not, we're gonna tear it down. All it's gonna cost is a twenty dollars investment to save some money. The sign and the letter, and if they don't tear it down, guess what, we'll tear it down for them. What, what is it, twenty dollars in thirty days? That's, that's the part I don't understand. Y'all questioning it is, but then, if it costs five thousand dollars for us to tear it down, and two thousand dollars for them to tear it down, or zero for them to tear it down, look like we winning, I, I'm, I'm not, maybe, I, I don't know.
Well, what about the fact that it's been up there for years?
If they get a thirty days to tear it down, and what I'm, what I'm, what I think, I don't like to point fingers, what I'm seeing is, we not understanding, or I'm not understanding is, we ain't never had a house torn down in thirty days from the night we made the decision anyway.
But I gotta wait thirty days.
That's fine, that'd be perfect, that'd be right on time.
No, 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 my process is gonna wait thirty days to start.
Okay.
In other words, in thirty days, I can do asbestos testing.
Okay.
Okay? And then that's gonna drag it out an extra, I don't know how long.
So, if they tear it down, they don't have to do asbestos testing?
Uh, it depends who they get to tear it down.
If they tear it down themselves, they, 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 they don't need to do asbestos testing.
They have a permit.
They have a permit, they have to have a permit.
I see what they're saying.
But they won't.
Yeah, yeah, but they won't, they won't.
They won't do asbestos testing, they gonna go in there and rip it down, go sell it, and they're going about their business.
We know, because they won't.
You know, I mean, I see this all the time, I feel like I seen it for five years, so I'm not coming from a novice, I'm coming from pretty much experience on this stuff. And what I have to wait on, and what we ain't waiting on, give them people their option to tear that down, save us some money, if they don't, we'll tear it down. What's complicated about that?
Okay, okay, that's good, thank you.
Five hundred, how many adjudicated, how many properties we gotta look like that?
Five hundred and sixty-eight, sir.
Okay, we got five hundred and sixty-eight dollars, we will not solve that problem.
It's, uh, it's, it's a bunch. But that is why we dedicating money, you know, trying to move on it, because...
And that is more important, that's why we got option two on this jealousy problem.
We know we have a problem. Okay, uh, Councilman Swir, you had your hand up?
Uh, so, yeah, Marlowe, I agree. Why, we don't wanna, you know, you wanna be conservative and save the city money, but at the same time, right, he just, the manager brought it up, we dedicated funds to do this.
And we'll do it to another one.
But, see... But what kind of message are we sending?
We're sending this message.
We dedicating these funds to demolish these kind of properties, but at the same time, hey, we're just gonna get, and I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out...
No, we just, all we doing is talking.
Well, all we doing is talking, I'm trying to figure out the, I guess...
That's the fun part of it.
The mind frame behind it, because we dedicated the funds, we want to clean up the city, but now, we want to wait and let these, and let the people that own the property sit back some more, and give them more time, and more, I, I just don't understand it.
So, you want me to answer it again? The message is clear. Give them thirty days to tear it down, and we save the city some money. If they don't, we only lose seven dollars, twenty dollars? And if, again, if, again, then if we can't use that option, then why is it on here?
Look, can I, I started the...
And I like the option personally.
I started the, that, okay, so, I agree with you, but at the same time, and this is your district, this is, you, uh, this is District Two.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's your opinion, I just feel that we fought hard to get the money, dedicated funding, to take care of this problem, and I don't think sitting back and keep allowing it to happen is gonna fix the problem that we have. That's just my...
We're not allowing it to happen, because we have a tool in place, and the, the money is not dedicated just for that, it's dedicated for the five hundred and sixty-eight we got.
That's one of them.
Exactly, so if we can get them to spend it, that's money that can go somewhere else, right? You got a business, I got a business, we know how to apply our money where we need to apply, and not spend where it don't need to be spent, right?
Here we go.
Right, sound like an option if the man responded. If he wouldn't have responded, as I told y'all on the first off, if he would not have responded, I would not be talking about this issue.
But he didn't respond.
No, he didn't respond.
He did?
He did.
No, he didn't.
He started to find out.
No, he didn't.
He did not respond.
The guy, when you sent the letter, didn't you say?
House we talking about, Jimmy?
Yeah, he, 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 he got the letter.
Uh-huh.
It, on April, on August the twenty-third. On August the twenty-third, he got the letter, so he knew this meeting was coming.
Okay, but you know he got the letter too, right? That's my point.
I had, I got the green card and the...
That's responding, he know he got the letter, he know what's going on with his house, so why not give him thirty days to go tear it down?
That's not responding.
That was, we talked about, we talked about, they seeing this, they knowing that they stuffed on the demolition list, that might let them tear it down. Hey, man, look, watch this, I'm following the lead. I'm following the lead, I'm not just doing this just off the top of my head, trust me, I'm not that emotional about these houses. I'm not that emotional about these houses, I want to see the whole city cleaned up, but I mean, at the same time, I mean, if y'all want me to say, don't worry about it, don't worry about saving the city no, don't worry about it, and option to save the city some money, if y'all say that, guess what? Then I'll, I'll change, I'll change my motion, but as of right now, my motion is, number two, give them thirty days to tear it down themselves, if not, we'll tear it down in thirty days. I mean, I, y'all act like thirty days is a lifetime, with dealing what we're doing.
Okay. Good, thank you, yes, ma'am, uh, I know y'all both had your hand up, I don't know who's first. Councilwoman led better.
My comment is, option two, the way I interpret option two, and I think the mo- the majority of us on here interpreted, is the person would come here and say, well, I'm gonna do this myself, or I'm gonna do some improvements, and I need some time. That's, didn't happen, at all. You know, and then you would give them option two, or maybe option three, depending if they came, like we just had somebody to come. He got the extra sixty days, cuz he was here. But all the rest of the people are not here, the person got the notice. They knew, two months ago, that it was coming up, when we announced it. And that, that's the way it is.
You said, you said, you said interpretation.
I know, but let's, uh, she has the floor, let's just, wait a second, I don't.
I don't interpret it that way.
I just don't, one at a time.
I think that, I said that's the way, the majority of the people on the council interpret. Somebody comes here, they give a response, they get up and they say they want to, they, you know, they wanna tear it down, or they wanna fix it. So you give them the extra time, but other than that, if they don't make, have a response at all, they're not concerned about, so you tear it down.
Again, I'm, I'm done, I'm done, but I will address it. You said the majority interpreted, I didn't hear the majority, but I will say this. The way I read it, is that we're giving them an option to tear it down in thirty days, period. I didn't go into detail psychologically, this is what it sounds like to me. And if they take this option, it saves the city some money, so if, you know, we don't wanna save the city no money on demolition to move to the next property, fine, y'all gotta vote.
Thank you.
So.
Councilman Reed.
I was gonna say the exact same thing she said. So, I interpreted the same way, if they show up, we give them options two or three, if they don't show, we can just move on it right away, because if I know that somebody's gonna do something with my property, I'm gonna show up and say, hey, whoa, wait a minute, I got, I'm gonna do this myself, I don't want the city to double, you know, charge me than what somebody else is gonna charge me. That's not what we're seeing here, the vast majority of the people didn't come here because they're not, they don't care. And so I think, and I don't know if this is something that we have to decide on a separate meeting, whatever, or look at the ordinance, how we're gonna do this, but this option, we all need to be on the same page of what these options, or how to use these options.
Well, this is the first time we try this.
I know, but I like the idea of doing it, I just think we need to be on the same page, cuz I interpreted the exact same way Deidre did. Just my thoughts.
No, thank you.
Is there any other comment, anybody has?
I've been waiting patiently.
You have, sir.
So, I think, I think all good comments, Marlowe, I think you get a great point, and I interpreted like DeeDee did, but, you know, this is the council, we make a decision, but I just wanna change, change the, the focus just for a minute. When you say saving the city some money, directly, absolutely correct, saving the city some money if you give them thirty days, sure. But what does it costing the city in public safety if they're doing illegal activity? If the police are having to go inspect these dilapidated buildings? You know, inspect them, ride by them, check them, if that property weren't there, the police wouldn't have to go inspect them, so indirectly may have a cost, you know, if we, if we get rid of them sooner than later. In my thoughts, you know? So I'm just thinking that maybe, I interpreted wrong, that it is a true savings directly from a financial, but, but from a public safety, maybe we're doing it better by getting rid of it sooner.
Right, and I agree, get rid of it as soon as you can, but what you just said, that ain't happening.
Okay.
That's not happening.
Well, they do have to go to these houses when there's a problem, they do have to, they do have to go when.
Then I like to say, well, let me see how many times you been at this house.
Yeah, no, no, you're right, I get it, but I'm just saying, you know, there may be some indirect costs associated with it.
Maybe some indirect costs, but direct causes.
That's what you said.
All right, anybody else have any comments? We still don't have a second, so we're gonna have to, we do that, but I've just been letting this talk, because that's what we do the best. Any other comments?
Lawyer, sometimes, I'm relating to this, you cover our behind a lot of times on slowing it down. Don't do this, and maybe give us a little time. Mr. Marlowe, we covering our, ourself as a council, anytime we giving them some more days. I've built, I've been down the first one, our fellow that showed up. Have to show caution sometimes, so, yes, I'll do another thirty days, and we're just helping the whole council, that if anybody ever brings up about something we tore down, we gave you every benefit of doubt, that's why I gave that man every benefit of doubt, to do what you gotta do. If he doesn't do it, it'll be done, so, uh, Mr. Simon, you've covered us a few times before, and I, I think right now, it's just covering ourself a little bit, that thirty more days might not hurt us. But, um, that's just my piece a little bit about it, as a legal standpoint.
I, I think if we give proper notice, then whatever the council decides to do is a legal choice. Cuz it's totally within your discretion, that's why you're here, and all these discussions are part of the process that we follow, and it's not a bad thing. Um, you know, if I were a councilman, I would look to the person whose district it is.
Correct.
Or to the mayor pro temp, you know, whose district everything is. Um, but I think, you know, there, there are no choices, I think, that are out of bounds.
Correct.
And I, you know, the difference between number one and number two is just page on the calendar.
Thank you.
Cuz it's, it's headed to number one, we know it's coming down, because they're not gonna tear it down. It just doesn't make that big a difference, but, you know, that's, that's up to y'all.
And that's why I like discussion, and that's why I go around this table with many, I just don't like y'all to cut each other, but you don't. But that's why I go around this table a hundred times if we have to, because I like the discussion, and at the end of the day, we have the money budgeted, and at the end of the day, we cleaning our town up, and these houses are gonna come down. And I'm not gonna quit putting them, and I'm about to tell Jimmy, I know we got to finish this one, get me another list and show me some more pictures, I, I wanna keep the machine moving, because we have so much to do.
And, and number, and if I could, and number two doesn't mean it comes back.
Correct.
Right, cuz they don't take any action.
So number two, if nothing happens, we know what happens.
We made a decision.
Yeah, so it's a delay. But.
Okay, is there any more discussion, or do I have a second on the motion? Oh, you had seconded? I didn't think you had, you didn't?
Number two.
And I don't know if I can say this, but I will, I'mma put it, I'm not gonna cut anybody, I'mma put a Band-Aid on it. I will never go in any other district but two, and say what I think needs to happen in that district, I will never do that.
Yeah, but, we all have opinions, and we all vote, so.
For demolition.
And we all vote, so, you know. Okay, so, okay, I just wanna make sure, so I have a first and a second, Marlowe and Councilman Bruce. Councilman Marlowe Lewis. Okay, so I have a motion and a second, uh, is there any further discussion? And if there is no further discussion, please vote your machines. All right, thank y'all. And let me just say, this is the first time we use this new process, I enjoyed the hell out of it, it, it's, it's good, we gonna get there, we gonna, you know, everybody's got opinions, it's good, but the main focus is, we are cleaning our town, and we're not gonna let up, and regardless of which one you pick on this little list, okay? Something's gonna happen, which is a good thing, I mean, that's the most positive thing of the night, is that, you know, takes us twenty minutes, or it takes us two hours, we still making motions and traction toward what we wanna do, which our end goal is to clean our town up, so I thank y'all for that, yes, sir?
Maybe we could get two or three of us together after this meeting, and go through that list, and better define it. That way, everybody knows, would be on the same page.
We can. I mean, I think we got the general crest of it using it tonight, and one, two, I like one, two, and three, and I think that, you know, it does work. We save some time on some of them, and then we spend a lot of time on some other ones, it's, it all works out, it's all good stuff. Again, thank you. So now I'mma move to Councilman's remarks, and I'mma start on Dustin's side tonight.
Thank you, uh, some good news. So today, the Liberty Bell was put in place, so I wanna thank everyone that was, who, that was involved, especially the mayor, the council, um, the veterans. Uh, I believe they're very happy to finally see something shaping up, and it wouldn't be possible without uh, all of us doing things together as a group and making it happen, so, other than that, uh, that's it for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Reed.
So, unfortunately for me, I'm like, I lost my page, but I just wanted to congratulate the young lady who won that award, the sixth grader who did a documentary on her, her grandfather. And I, I don't have her name, I had her, I thought I had it in here, but I don't have it.
Chloe is her first name, I forget her last name.
Chloe Willis, thank you, thank you, Heather.
That, that was my wife's project.
Oh, awesome.
Margaret's the teacher who worked with her to do that.
Oh, good, oh, wow, she did a fantastic job, so I just wanna say, that is a huge accomplishment, she beat out everybody. And for a small town like ours, I just wanna congratulate her and say, you know, for the rest of the students in our Iberia Parish, here's an example of what you can do when you just put your mind and your heart into your work. So, congratulations, Chloe.
Cool, thank you. Councilwoman led better.
Uh, tonight, I just wanna remind everybody that the mask mandate has been extended through, uh, October for four weeks, so, um, mask up, and, uh, if you can, get your vaccinations, and, uh, stay safe, that's all.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Now, just, uh, stay tuned, I think we had a pre-construction meeting for Lewis Street, right?
Yes, we did.
So I think, uh, hopefully in the near future, we're gonna see some asphalt hit the ground in the city, and these people will be getting excited, so, uh, and also be aware, our local farmers has started harvesting this week, so obviously, uh, we're gonna see a little bit direction of traffic on De La Salle and Amadou, but, uh, all for a good cause.
Councilman Bruce.
It was good to see some people show up for Jefferson Terrace, our flooding issue, and all issues of flooding in Yarberia. Uh, please watch out, we trying to do better. And Mr. Mayor, our, uh, resource officers, we have one at West, at Hysnich, a few others, a sheriff, sheriff, I know sheriff has some too. We can't give them enough recognition, there's a lot of kids in there, and they're not all good. So we gotta keep somebody, they're not all good. I drive the school bus. I drive the school bus. And look, there needs to be a lot of, a lot of help, and they giving it to us, Mr. Mayor. Please, good to see you at the, at the schools.
Thank you. Councilman Lewis.
Yeah, Mayor, uh, man, I, I wanna start off, um, on a good note, I guess, cuz I got good news and bad news to use, uh, to talk about in announcement.
Okay.
The good news is, um, and his grandson is sitting right there, um, Clarence Jones, uh, Junior, first, he made a hundred and two years old, and he's a resident of my district, um. I also saw the documentary, what is new stuff on, uh, Mr. Drakers Burke, he also made a hundred and two.
Yes.
We got some wisdom in our community, so happy birthday to both of those people, uh, Mr. Drakers Burke, and, um, of course, uh, Papa Stop is what they call him, Mr. Clarence Jones, a hundred and two years old. Also, I'd like to get my condolences to the family, uh, and he's from our next door neighbors, uh, Mr. Zephany Banks. Uh, Zephany Banks served on, uh, either the parish or the city council of Generet, uh, I think it was the city council of Generet. Uh, he was interim before an election, uh, he also served on the Democratic Parish Executive Committee, uh, actually, Ibe- uh, Iberia Parish Democratic Executive Committee, he was a teacher, I think it was New, New Iberia Senior High or Generet Senior High, both. Uh, Zeph was a, um, friend, he was a community minded person, um, he was laid to rest today, so I wanna give my condolences to his family and to his community, um, and also, I always say, man, to my youth, man, put down the guns, uh, I don't know, I don't know if, we, it's not a game. Uh, we had another senseless, uh, and, senseless murder, you know, I, I say senseless, but, uh, you know, it's happening, uh, and, and, and I'mma say this, I say senseless, but, but they make sense, when, when, when everybody's got guns, they ain't senseless, they actually make sense. When everybody's shooting at each other, somebody's bound to get hit. Now, on a good note, this young lady came to me passing out flyers about, and Heather and Mayor, about a trunk or treat for dogs, and it's a fundraiser for the, um, Humane Society. And when she came to me, I, I thought about all of the things that we've been experiencing with, uh, our animals. I mean, we could surely use a fundraiser for the Humane Society to better help our animal community, so that event is going to be, it's called Wolf or Treat Halloween fundraiser, it's gonna be on Halloween, October the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-one, from twelve to five, in New Iberia City Park.
Yes.
Come out, at the dog park, at the dog park in City Park, uh, come out and support this event. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, uh, I too would like to thank everybody associated with the Liberty Bell, you know, we had a lot of private donors, uh, I was able to facilitate with the help of my staff raising some of the money, the veterans, of course, from the very beginning, raised money for the Veterans Memorial, as well as for the Bell. We, uh, like I said, we had private donations, Bayroy Transportation came out with a whole crew of people, uh, mobilized a crane, set all of that for free, work with, uh, I got to spend, uh, part of the day yesterday, and a good part of the day today with Public Works, with a couple of the guys and Joe, and we really had a lot of fun. Get, get the bell assembled, and, uh, they flew it in, and then we finished putting it together. Uh, I think it is the, the jewel we needed for the centerpiece of our Veterans Memorial. Um, if you look at Bulling Plaza, the, uh, Steamboat, next to the Steamboat Pavilion, the old restroom, which is gonna be a outdoor visitor's center, that's well underway, that's all been demoed, and now they're going back with, uh, you know, fi- finishing and putting it together, that's an exciting project. I think that whole little area, our New Iberia letters now really show up, I've actually been seeing people take pictures there, which is the whole point of it. Um, we probably, November, December, we have the farms built, and we will pour the base for the, uh, James Lee Burke sculpture. You know, with all the books that he wrote about New Iberia, we still get tourists, tourists there, we're hoping he can pop out a couple of more. Uh, but we'll be pouring that base, and then a sign will go up to try to help us raise the rest of the money, because we've had some private donations for that, but all that area is beginning to tell a story. When Felicity's Landing gets built, that adds another great story, that adds a potential tour boat, that gives us a way in and out of the body, but all of that is starting to really come together, show our diversity, and, and tell that story that, you know, we're all getting behind, to get tourists here, to continue to, uh, motivate the city, and to kind of move it forward, this is a good, positive image for us. Um, as you know, we're, I just sent in some capital outlay, so y'all had approved that, uh, our people are working hard on it, I've been talking to them about it. They are pushing, we're now be getting letters of support from all of our Baton Rouge delegation to try to move those projects forward. Um, we had a little good news today, uh, Burton, our auditor, ran the formulas for the last three years, and out of the nine point four of the, uh, American Rescue Plan, we'll be able to take one point three as a loss, so that means that money goes back to where it needed to go as a loss, then can go to the general fund, and we can use that for whatever we want, besides the framework of the American Rescue Plan. So that, to me, gives us the money, if you agree, to buy the fire truck, because it's a long delivery item for the ladder truck. The ladder truck is forty-three years old, and the pumper on it doesn't work, so we lose points, and remember, we were like half a point to lose our rating of the two rating, we had to spend a bunch of money with a consultant, you get a couple of points if your ladder truck, not only is the ladder truck, but the pumper works, okay, cuz it's supposed to. So, uh, that is a long delivery item, I talked to Gordon today and said, I, I have to bring it to the council, to me, it is in the list of projects we wanted to do, but if you approve that, that's one I could start on immediately, because it's gonna be, Gordon did a wonderful job, we both worked on it last time, of negotiating the price of the two fire trucks we bought. So the more time we have to start negotiating, the better deal we're gonna get for our city. So that's one that I'll be probably bringing that soon, some of the other American, American Rescue, we are working very hard, Aaron and I, the portal, waiting for a portal to be open, we've sent things to LMA, we've got opinions from other bigger cities, we're working on it, but I'll be bringing that as soon as we get an answer of if our projects will be approved, and if they weren't, we'll come back and, and try again. Um, the one block at a time, we, uh, have had a phone conversation with the mayor that is doing something similar, we've been making notes. I just, uh, downloaded this morning, I took some screenshots of another community I found, and some USDA rules, and I'm kinda trying to come up with a format, so that I can bring that to y'all, for y'all to approve it, because that's another one that I'm pretty sure is gonna get approved, and it's the longest running one. When you're gonna do projects of buy something, or renovate a park, or do something that's more in my wheelhouse, more that we know how to do, that's the one that we're inventing something, so I, I wanna at least start a dialogue on it, and get moving, cuz it kinda fits in at the same of, of tearing these houses down, the same thing we spent hours on tonight. It all fits in to get the residential peace, and to get our citizens and our neighborhoods reactivated, cuz that's all we're trying to do. So that's one that I wanna continue to work on, but pretty soon, I'd like to have some, even though we don't have it all fleshed out, some public conversations of how we might see that work, cuz I think that people are gonna be very interested in that.
Absolutely.
I think that that's a very positive message, not only are we protecting the neighbors by tearing the derelict houses down, but when you can start putting money into a house where somebody lives, that owns that house, that's when you really, that's when I feel like we're really moving in a, in a really positive direction. Um, so I just wanna fill you on on that, the Halloween parade is shaping up, Homer, because of the hurricane, canceled there, so we would have people coming from there and inquiring about it. We, uh, it seems to be a little bigger than we thought it was gonna be for the first year, but that's beginning to shape up, I think that's gonna be a lot of fun, that is the Saturday before Halloween, we dye the fountain at two o'clock black, and then we proceed to the parade, and I think we got some skulls floating in the fountain, it's, it's getting kinda wild. But, it's gonna be fun, and so then we do the parade at three, and so I'm excited about that, because New Iberia's never done that, uh, really, in Acadiana. Uh, really, in Acadiana, we're probably the only Halloween, we are, the only Halloween parade that I know of, so I think that anytime we can do something neat and unique that might bring people from out of town, uh, why not, man, and it's good for our citizens. So, that's kinda it for tonight, sir?
If somebody wants to get in the parade, do they have a permit process?
They, we do have a permit, we have a waiver, you, you, we have a permit, you're assigned a number, uh, you can call my office and talk to Hillary, and she is kinda in charge of that project, and so we've been working on that, uh, for the last few weeks. Decorations will start going up right after this weekend, after, and don't forget, we have the Gumbo Cook-Off this weekend. The decorations will start going up for the Halloween parade after, we wanted to wait and respect the Gumbo Cook-Off, so those decorations will be going up, uh, right after the, uh, Gumbo Cook-Off's over. That's really it, I thank y'all for a really, I think, a very good meeting, so, thank you for that, and let's see, our next meeting is October the nineteenth, and I'll just look for a motion to adjourn. There you go.